Is that a mayor and council members on that?
You are?
Hi.
Okay, no?
What you guys know?
Thank you.
Hit the on button.
Thank you.
Very nice job with raise.
Oh, I know, do you have a copy of it that we can read?
Thank you.
Do we have a copy of it that we can read at the meeting? Of Mr. Voitovic's?
Do we have a copy?
I can get one. Yeah, I can.
Send your email, madam.
Yeah.
I think it'd be nice to read at the meeting. This is a very well-attended funeral this afternoon, or this morning. All right, we're still waiting on a couple of people, but we do have a quorum, and it is 7:00, so
It's getting stuck.
I'm ready to go. I call this meeting of the Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, January 14, and it is 7:00 PM on the DAT. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Mayewski.
Present.
Mayor Protem Parada.
Present.
Councilman Karpinski.
Present.
Councilman Chaudry. Councilman Almar Sumi.
He is not going to be here this evening, he has a work in his hands.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yeah, I'm reading.
President, Councilman Hassan.
Present.
That is a quorum matter.
Thank you. All rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Do we have, see, we have several proclamations and recognitions and presentations. Our first item is an information item, our differences count, and is there someone making that?
No, this is a census. At each of our meetings, Madam Mayor, we share one piece of information about the census, and that's available on board docs on the city website as well. We'll put it on our city Facebook page. 2020 is the year of the census, and for Hamtramck, that's a very, very important count of our population that will result in resources being shared through the federal government. What this week's public service announcement is, is that responses from the census will inform how more than $675 billion of public funding will flow to communities. We want to make sure that every person in Hamtramck is counted, so Hamtramck gets its fair share of those resources. So, we'll be reaching out over the upcoming weeks and months to make sure that we have our fair share of money that goes to public health clinics, community services, after-school programs, college/university grants, programs that support minority-owned businesses, which we have a lot of in Hamtramck. So we want to make sure that people participate in the census in 2020.
Because the funding is distributed by our numbers, and it doesn't matter if you're a citizen or not, it doesn't matter if you live here permanently or not, if you live here on the day that you fill out the census, then, or you are here, then you need to be counted, and that information is safe and hidden for 72 years, so you don't have to worry about a thing, but every person needs to be counted. We'll be saying that every single meeting, reminding people. Okay. We also have a proclamation for International Mother Language Day, and... Let's... Councilman Choudhury, would you like to read that proclamation?
Sure. Can you pull up on my screen? Is it...
Yeah, you'll get the hang of it.
Yeah. I already went through one, so just...
I'm always nervous if I'm gonna actually be able to make it work or not.
I'll be using it. Okay.
Be interrelational.
This is this.
Click on that document. And then the document again.
All right. So I read the whole thing?
Sure.
Sure, okay. All right. So, good evening, folks. This is, whereas by United Nations resolutions, International Mother Language Day is celebrated on the 21st of February each year. Whereas, the date represent the day in 1952, when students demonstrated, demonstrating for recognition of their language, which called Bangla, Bengali, as one of the two national languages of the Pakistan were shot and killed by police in Dhaka, the capital of Bangladesh. The capital of what is now called Bangladesh, and whereas the city of Hamtramck, with its rich tradition of cultural diversity, agrees with the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, I guess it's called UNESCO?
UNESCO.
UNESCO, that languages are the most popular instruments of preserving... I'm sorry? And developing our tangible and intangible heritage. Almost to promote the dissemination of the native languages will serve not only to encourage linguistic diversity and multicultural education, but also to develop fuller awareness of linguistics... A very tough word.
Linguistic.
Yeah, culture and tradition throughout the world, and to inspire solidarity based on understanding, tolerance, and dialogue. Whereas, a rally to commemorate International Mother Language Day, beginning at 10:00 PM on February 20, and end at 1:00 AM February 21 at Jasmine Park. So please join us on the 20th of February, we'll be celebrating our Mother Language Day. It is our Bangladeshi traditions, and it is a big day for us, because lots of students demonstrated and sacrificed for the mother language in Bangladesh.
Yeah, and one of the things that's important to Hamtramck in general is that everyone's language is respected. So although this is a Bangladeshi holiday, it has meaning for everyone here. We've been doing this for the last several years. Former Councilman Musa was a big proponent of this event, and it does actually start at 10:00 in the evening. But I'm not sure who's still gonna be here at 1:00 in the morning, so...
I will. It's a big day.
All right, well...
Thank you.
More power to you.
Thank you.
And next item is a presentation of the Plan Commission Annual Report, and Grace Stamper. Present.
For those of you I haven't met, I'm Grace Stamper, I'm the Economic Development Associate for the city. I mostly work with the Plan Commission, zoning board repeals, and then day-to-day zoning issues. I just wanted to give you a quick summary of this year's Plan Commission Annual Report that's required by state law. The Plan Commission mostly recommends to city council to make final decisions. So with that being said, we've held seven public hearings, we've recommended preliminary site plan approval once. That one is still in place, hasn't made it to final yet. We recommended combined or final site plan approval nine times. The Plan Commission can do its own special land use approvals, so it's approved two of those, and has one that's still contingent upon final site plan approval. We've made two rezoning recommendations, and then we recommended one set of zoning text amendments that were in place to get the city more aligned with the redevelopment ready community standards. So, in the back of the report, there's some more details, but I won't go through those right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add one thing to the section, and that is, we lost, as most of you know, a former mayor and former Wayne County Treasurer, Ray Voitovic, longstanding Hamtramck resident, and his funeral was today, and I'd like to read to you the proclamation that was presented to the family at his visitation last night, and I'd also like to thank our city clerk for always doing a beautiful job at forming those, writing those, and doing honor to the city and to the families that we interact with. So, the proclamation reads, Raymond Voitovic was a true gentleman of Hamtramck, born, raised, and educated, and steadfastly loyal to the city. Born, raised, educated, and steadfastly loyal to the city, Uncle Ray served the people of Hamtramck and Wayne County for more than four decades. He was elected mayor of Hamtramck in 1970, before taking the reins at the Wayne County Treasurer's office in 1974. Raymond was known for his approachability and empathy for those in need. While he served us all publicly, he was also the patriarchal rock of a large, loving family, blessed to celebrate his 90th birthday with four generations of family. The world is a better place because of Ray, and it is an understatement to say the absence of his uplifting presence will leave a hole in many of our hearts. The city of Hamtramck and I express deep sorrow and regret upon the passing of Raymond Voitovic, and extend to his family, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren the utmost sincere sympathy on our behalf and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hamtramck. Do we have any other proclamations, presentations, or recognitions tonight?
No.
Then we'll move on to the agenda approval, and I'd like to suggest that we, since we have a large group here from the Ukrainian community, and they are right now Item D under New Business, if we could move them to Item A? Yeah, I mean, you all are welcome to hang around as long as you want, but... But we are gonna make it a little easier for you.
Without objection, Madam Mayor.
Without objection. And was there anything, was there, okay. Then, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To approve the amended? Any objection? No, so the amended agenda is approved. And then we move to public input.
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
What? That is a first. All right.
Not even over yet.
Well, we still got the end, public input at the end. Then we'll move to the consent agenda, and the items on the consent agenda are adopted in a single motion without discussion. Those items are, the approval of the minutes from the December 10 regular city council meeting, 2019, the approval of the invoice register for the date ending January 4, 14, the approval of the pre-approved expenditures for the date ending January 14, and a resolution approving the mayoral reappointment of the regular members to the Plan Commission.
Madam Mayor, I have a question about the Plan Commission. Do we need to appoint a member of our...
We will.
Will. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is adopted. And now we'll move to New Business, and the first item of New Business is...
I think it's D would be the first one.
Yeah, yeah, now I've gotta, now I've gotta negotiate this idea here and find it. This is the resolution approving the designation of a Ukrainian Heritage Neighborhood.
I'll offer.
Second.
And... For the members at home who may not have been aware of this effort, it's been going on for quite some time, for a number of years. The community has met, I met with father and with several other members of the community several years ago to talk about this idea. You know that, and I have to tell you all how important the diversity of Hamtramck is, and that we value that diversity as an essential part of our identity. And so we wanted to make sure that our Ukrainian community was also recognized, over, a community that's over 100 years old, and that sometimes gets overlooked in the city. So, this resolution, and I will read it to you, approves the designation of a Ukrainian Heritage Neighborhood. Whereas in 2014-15, the idea of branding a Ukrainian village was initiated to promote the neighborhood for local residents and demonstrate the values of a diverse, inclusive, and global city. And whereas the Ukrainian community has been historically vital to the diverse social, cultural, and economic growth of the city of Hamtramck, and whereas the geographic boundaries of Ukrainian Heritage Neighborhood will be defined as lying between Joseph Campo and Conant, and between Carpenter and Casimir. Whereas the distinctive racial, ethnic, and cultural diversity of the entire area known as Ukrainian Heritage Neighborhood has created positive community relations and contains such Hamtramck institutions as Immaculate Conception Ukrainian Catholic Church, Buha Funeral Home, the Ukrainian American Archives and Museum, and the Self-Reliance American Federal Credit Union. And whereas the name Tarashevchenko is the most compelling honorary street name to give, since he is universally known in the Ukrainian community as a poet, writer, artist, as well as folklorist and ethnographer. And whereas the Ukrainian Self-Reliance American Federal Credit Union will donate the cost of street signs, which will be purchased and fixed on already existing street poles, to grant Comer the honorary name of Shevchenko Street. And whereas the Ukrainian community plans to commission a mural that depicts Ukrainian imagery and the contributions of Ukrainian immigrants to the community, the mural may be located in the area of Cherest and Comer. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hamtramck, Wayne County, Michigan, that the area of Hamtramck located on Joseph Campo to Conant and Carpenter to Casimir be designated as Ukrainian Heritage Neighborhood, and Comer Street receive the honorary designation of Shevchenko Street. That's the proclamation, is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, I think this is a very good addition to our city and our reputation as an international destination, and I'm really happy that we were able to include the Ukrainian community as officially designated neighborhood. So, thank you for spearheading this and allowing it to happen.
We thank you.
Yes, same here. It's great to have diversity in any other cultural traditions and heritages. Ukrainians have been here a long, long time, and we'd like to see these things happen. Sure.
All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is the first part of a two-part process, just to let you know. The neighborhood designation happens now. We'll have a public hearing at the next meeting to do the street naming for the five-sevenths vote of council and yourself.
Okay.
To do that, so that's the process for that to be official.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Then we have a resolution approving the designation of a Ukrainian Heritage Neighborhood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes, congratulations. I know you put a lot of work into figuring this out, so appreciate that. All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Briefly, I'm being told I need to do some tech support on my livestream, so continue on as if I'm not fiddling around with that. Please excuse me.
All right, then, next item, and again, if you choose to stay, you're welcome, but if you've had enough, then... Our next item is a resolution approving a memo of understanding with the Police Officers Association of Michigan and the Command Officers Association of Michigan.
I'll offer.
Is there a second?
I'll do the second.
Okay. Madam City Manager, did you want to?
Absolutely. So, the agenda note is pretty clear, this is an approval of a memo of understanding with the POAM and the COAM. We entered into a collective bargaining agreement with both groups some time ago, but it did not provide medical insurance for certain members' dependents. The previous city manager had been giving that medical insurance to all groups, but it had never come before council. And so this today is passing a resolution. The practice is already in place, and it is budgeted. However, city council has never been aware of it and voted on it as part of ratifying that contract.
So this is just kind of...
Formalizes what's going on around.
Crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question. So this is for POAM and COAM, are we offering this to other employees of the city?
The other contracts that are under negotiation, they'll negotiate that benefit.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
I say this about every contract that comes up, if it was negotiated by the representatives of the organization, and it was agreed to by those members, we have to take that at face value as a recommendation to move forward.
Then we have a resolution approving the memo of understanding with the Police Officers Association of Michigan and the Command Officers Association of Michigan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The resolution passes. Next item is a resolution approving a final site plan for the standalone ATM located at 9149 Joseph Campo.
I'll offer.
I'll second.
And Grace, you're up again.
I'm back. So, just a really quick overview of this project. We're requesting final site plan approval. It's been recommended by the Plan Commission for a standalone ATM unit at 9149 Joseph Campo, which is just the parking lot of the town center. When Plan Commission recommended it, it was contingent upon a couple of things being edited on the site plan, which was adding landscaping and a concrete barrier between the ATM and the parking spots. Both of those things were added. And Architect is here if you have any questions.
Okay. And Architect, do you want to wave? Okay.
Good evening, my name's Chris Humphrey. I stated I am the architect for this project, and... Do you want a presentation, or I'm just questions?
If anybody has any questions, then... All right, well, it looks like you got off easy. So we have a resolution approving the final site...
You can say I didn't, I don't know. I looked down, I heard it.
Yeah, I don't know.
So we have a resolution approving a final site plan for the standalone ATM located at 9149 Joseph Campo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Next item is a resolution approving the acceptance of the award of the Holbrook Avenue Reconstruction Project between Lumpkin and Joseph Campo.
I'll offer.
I'll second.
And I believe we have a revised resolution?
Yes.
That you all have in front of you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your package, there was, we did put in a resolution, the cost for Hennessy Engineering. Wasn't that Mark Direcki from Hennessy Engineering here to describe the project? Just want you all to remember, orange barrels are jobs, orange barrels are good. We have to put up with a little inconvenience in order to have something that's beautiful at the end of summer 2020.
Okay. So, discussion. Mark, do you have anything you want to say about this?
I think the city manager summed it up well. It will be an inconvenience for the residents, but in the long run, you'll have a new road, new sewers, new water main, get rid of the old cast iron water main, the old lead water services, which we have to get rid of. The plan is to start in the spring, hopefully have everything done by the fall, as long as we don't run into any unforeseen circumstances. The contractor that was low bid through the MDOT process, we've worked with them before. They're, they do a lot of roadwork, road reconstruction, so we're comfortable with them, and we look forward to getting a new road for the residents.
Any...
Press, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman and then...
Can we be guaranteed we're not gonna get sledding hills as sidewalks and curbs like we have on the other side of Campo?
You have to remember, MDOT designs this project, and so they're still working with that curb between...
Gallagher and Conant.
Gallagher and Conant. That is still being worked on, they're working through that process still. Because yes, you're right, they, they, Mark, you can give more of a description of...
I have not seen it, but I know I've talked with Charles Smith, our one supervisor, and he's aware of it, and I know he's been working on it. As long as we know what we have to do, and we make sure the contractor follows it. Because we want it as safe as possible for the residents, because we know how many people walk around the city of Hamtramck, and, you know, we want it as safe for them as well as the traveling public.
I was just gonna ask you, sir, President, how long is this project gonna be going on?
I, right now, I believe we estimate at 170 days, plus or minus.
Six months.
180 days. 180 days, six months.
Throughout the summer until there's another winter approaching.
And knock on wood, all depending on how the weather cooperates.
Sure.
If we got a lot of rain, that's gonna, you know, push it back.
Push it back.
But if we get some nice dry spells, that'll help as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then we have a resolution approving the acceptance of the award of Holbrook Avenue Reconstruction Project between Lumpkin and Joseph Campo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did I hear an opposed?
No.
Oh.
Nope.
Oh, okay. All right, the resolution passes.
Madam Mayor, can we just mention what's coming out? Madam Mayor, can we just mention what's coming out, or what the cost effect is?
Sure. Do you want to...
Well, I'm trying to follow it, but some of it is grant money, or...
Eighty-one point one-five percent is federal money.
Okay.
Which works out to be $1.33 million. The overall project is $2.62 million. So basically, the city is paying half of that 2.6, because the water main is a non-participant portion of the federal aid money, which we estimated about $590,000 for the new water main.
But it'll be coming out of Act 51 money, not general fund money?
The water main will be coming out of water and sewer. The remaining portion of the road project, the $295,000, will come out of Act 51.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that for the public.
All right. Then, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item is a resolution approving the use of City Council chambers by the Wayne Metro Community Action Agency for free tax preparation services.
I'll offer.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to commend Casey Kopp, who is our community development coordinator. He's been working with Wayne Metro Community Action Agency, and I'll have him come up to the mic for a moment just to give just a quick overview of what they'd like to do and introduce himself to those of you that don't know.
Hi, for the new members, I'm Casey, community development, as Cap said. So basically, Wayne Metro, they have a tax services wing of their organization where they work for free with people to file their taxes in particularly low-income areas, which I think is very important to help people, you know, file their taxes and whatnot in the new season. So it really isn't a whole lot that they're asking. They just want to use our space every Monday from February through March, except for President's Day, and that's really it. That's all they're asking to do, and they're just going to be here to help people. We hope to advertise it if it's approved, so people know to come here to get their help filing taxes for free. So that's what's going on.
Thanks.
Any questions?
So it'll be during these business hours, from eight to four, right? Do they need to make any appointment ahead of time?
It'll be walk-in.
Walk-in services for anyone? And you have a templates or information brochure to, in order, you know, for the clients to bring in before?
Yeah, I can share it with you.
Wayne Metro is going to share what they need. They'll give us some information that we can put on our Facebook page, and we can share that with the review and, you know, other news media, so that people know that this is available here. They'll be able to have private consultation, either in this room or in the small office across the hall, and people can wait on the benches outside, so that they're not standing on top of each other, because it's private to do your dances.
Sure.
So we're just letting them use our space, wanting to do that.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Then we have a resolution approving, thank you, Casey, approving the use of City Council chambers by the Wayne Metro Community Action Agency for free tax preparation services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. Next item is a resolution supporting Representative Isaac Robinson's appeal to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to halt the expansion of the U.S. Ecology Facility.
Offer.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? I think we've been hearing a lot about this lately.
Yep.
Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And the last item is a resolution setting the date for consideration and naming of the public park at 2134 Trowbridge.
I'll offer.
Second.
Madam Mayor, you'll remember, council members and those that are watching, that at a meeting in late, or in December, the gentleman who donated the property for the park came to the council meeting and suggested the name of Salim Peace Park.
Salam, right?
Salam.
Salam Peace Park. And we did not put the name in the resolution that you have before you tonight, because we want to know if that's the name that council wants considered. If that's a name you can generally agree upon, we will put that in the public notice that that's the name that you're considering, and that people could come and speak to that name. So that would be the name that was suggested by the person that donated it, but you're free to come up with your own names, or something else that you want to consider, or go with that. The concept of the park, the picture is in your packet, along with the donation resolution that was done some time ago.
Madam Chair?
Councilman?
If the donor requests something, some name, my idea, I should appreciate and to accept that name, no issue for me, because he's the first one to donate for the park, environment, everything, so that's... I'm okay with that one, if my other colleagues, if they give.
Does anyone else have a...
I would agree with you. Councilman?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Hassan, that the donor would like to have his or her own name. I'd like to consider that first, you know, and this is... I don't want to speculate too much. I don't know much, you know, I wasn't aware of this. I got the agenda, but is this like a renaming the street name?
To council members, this, a couple of years ago, a gentleman donated a piece of property that he owned on Trowbridge Street to have it made into a park, and the city council at that time accepted that donation of that piece of land, and he said that he was going to either fund the entire cost of the park or raise money for the park. So the pictures that you see in your packet are his ideas of what that park would look like. Those will come back to you for approval, because once he made that donation, it now belongs to the city. So as much as he wants it to look like this, you may have other ideas on how you would want that park to look, or, you know, if we wanted to do something, but he wants to raise the money, but he wants to raise the money with the park named. So if the park has a name, he can say, "I'm raising money for this piece of land called this." And, you know, I agree with councilmen and others who spoke, and nodded in agreement. You know, in the time that we're in, talking about peace, what could be a better name?
Madam Mayor, I think when he spoke at the last council meeting, he did say that he asked some neighbors and stuff, so I don't think it's, you know, him saying, "I want this park named after me." You know, I think the residents in that area were in agreement of that, because he was in fact donating it, so I would completely agree with that.
So, do we need to...
Set up the date.
To revise this resolution in any way, or...
I wouldn't ask you to amend. Do they have a resolution to have that name, and then we can do the appropriate, take the appropriate action for the subsequent meeting?
Okay. So do I have a motion to amend the resolution to include the name Salam Peace Park?
I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, including the name Salam Peace Park, as is amended.
Okay. So all those in favor of including, of amending the resolution to include the name Salam Peace Park, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now we have an amended resolution. All those in favor, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor of the amended, of the resolution as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
It's all set.
It's all set.
You can raise the money now.
Ready to go. Okay, then that is the end of new business, and it takes us to our reports. I have no real report for you today, but I did want to say, except to say that I was in New York for an historical conference last weekend, and one, at the conference, one of the whole session was devoted to Hamtramck. So I was one of the presenters at that conference. We also had a presenter talking about the Bangladeshi community. We were supposed to have two for the Bangladeshi community, but one person couldn't make it at the last minute. But this was a conference, our piece of it was very small, but this is a conference attended by thousands of historians from around the country, and we had a full house for the Hamtramck presentations. So people are interested in who we are and how we live together, so just wanted to let you know that. And that is my report for tonight. Council members?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
Census is very important, it's coming. A couple of meeting, I think we had Wayne County and Detroit, basically mainly Wayne County. There is some complaint came, I don't know if the, you know, is really truth or not, from the city of Hamtramck, nobody go there and cooperating the census discussion. So, I say I don't know, and we can discuss about that. And the last census was the very low rating, counting from Hamtramck, and largely that area is the very red zone. So we have to discuss, like Madam Mayor said, every single, like you, Mayor just said, every single meeting, we have to discuss and encourage the Hamtramck residents, like again, there is the, no disclosure, even president cannot touch before 72 years. So there is no question about the citizenship, nothing to be worry, who live in, right now I go there, or form came to the house at that point, that time, who live in that house, they all are qualified, and they all have, we have to count it. So the one of the professor from Wayne State University did some statistical report, like 1,800 we're going to lose, but this area, especially when we count as Wayne County, Head Start, all those other programming, and benefit we are taking from the government, this area, if we include all those things, do the math, is go over 5,500. So, it's not the 1,800, it may be for other areas true, for our area, it's over 5,500. So we all need help. So please, I'm requesting all the residents, we all have to count, we all have to help each other to make sure we count right. And political side, as a politician, we lose the one congress seat. We want to bring it back. So if we bring it back, if from our area, from Hamtramck and Detroit, this area, we can have our avenue congressman from our community. So that's the good thing. So I'm requesting everybody to make sure we all, anywhere we go, any meeting, we discuss about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Mayor? Councilwoman?
Just a little public service announcement. Last week, I was out walking and noticed some suspicious activity, and made a call to the police department, which led to arrest of four suspects that were involved in some pretty heinous crimes. So I just want to plead to the residents that, you know, keep aware, and if you notice anything suspicious, please report it. You know, as simple as it may seem to you, it could really lead to catching some bad people out there, so just be more aware and keep your heads up.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
I just wanted to say, today I attended SEMCOG, SEMCOG University, discussed getting bills passed, and I'll be working with SEMCOG in the coming months to try and craft some of the policies that are going to be, we're going to be pushing going forward, so I'm looking forward to doing that. To touch on the census, if you are looking for work right now, the census is trying to hire, and particularly people who have, are bilingual or multilingual, are very sought after. So there's a lot of opportunities to be, for employment with the census, and while it's only done every 10 years, it's a constantly evolving process, and just because you start as a census taker doesn't mean it can't lead to other opportunities. So I would encourage residents that are multilingual and looking for work to take a look at the census, because I think if we have residents conducting the census, we're more likely to get residents to complete it. Also, I'd say thank you to Councilwoman Karpinski for being an example of just a good resident and a good neighbor. From what I understand, you saw somebody that looked like they were maybe stealing packages?
Yeah.
And those people that were stealing packages had been involved in a violent robbery, with like a weapon, right?
Alleged.
Allegedly, yes. Because nothing happens until it's been proven in the court. So, there, a simple tip like that can have a huge impact on the neighbors, on the city, so kudos to you, and everybody else, please stay vigilant.
Yeah, I do want to add that the normal me would, I saw them throwing boxes out of a car. The normal me would have yelled at them and said, "Why are you throwing those? You know, they look like kids, and, you know, what are you doing?" I'm glad that I backed away and just, you know, observed and called the police, because it could have been different, but... So yeah, I don't, you don't want to jump in and get involved, I guess. That's the moral thing, but just watch.
Well, no, the moral is get involved just enough to do safely, but also make a difference.
And is there any other councilperson who'd like to speak?
Madam Chair, I forget one more thing. Yeah. From the Bengali community, again, about the census, there's the BADC did the one really very good, and also BEPEC did one, and BEPEC want to come, if we have permission to come and make the presentation, and one is to the council. So, but tomorrow they have the meeting, I'm going to let them know from your information when they can come next meeting, do the little, a small presentation. So that's the one request.
All right. Then, Councilman?
I'd just, I'd like to thank you everyone for being here today, especially the Ukrainian community, and you heard enough about the census, you know, and we're going to continuously be talking about the census. It is important to be counted, you know, in this community. It is a very important census every 10 years, so, because the federal grants and everything else depends on that. So to be, so please be counted and encourage others, you know, even if they live here temporarily, they should be counted too, right? So if they're here temporarily, they also can report to the census.
Yeah, so have all your family visit.
Thank you.
Do you have advertisements, or just, you know, some information sent to us?
Tell the priest to announce in church.
And all the mosques, all the churches, yes.
The mosques, all the places where people want to pray. Every single Friday. And they will listen to you.
So if we have no more reports than...
Yeah.
Councilman, did you want to say yours? Okay. And Madam City Manager?
Sure. Just real briefly, Madam Mayor, joined in today along with Councilman Osemiri and some of our administrative staff with the peace rally in the park that the Commonwealth Alliance put on today. It was very nice, at around four o'clock. We were encouraging Imam Arif to do things in the warmer weather, but we didn't freeze like we did last time. So it was a very peaceful, prayerful moment for, you know, our immigrant community to think about their family and friends in their home country. We have, on this Thursday, you are all invited, along with the public is invited. We have a patrolman, Patrolman Gonzalez is going to be promoted to detective at 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, right here in this room. You are all welcome to join, and he and his family for that promotion ceremony. And along with Councilwoman Karpinski, I attended our former mayor's funeral today, and went to the funeral home yesterday. You know, I'm related to Mr. Witovich by cousins, and got to stop with a large group of cousins, so it was a really beautiful, beautiful remembrance today of all he was to our community and to family and friends in this community. So that was an important moment for the city, I think, and I was proud to be there. But that's it for today. Thank you.
All right. Then we will move back to public comment. This time, we've got one.
We got one.
Good evening, all of you, mayor, council members.
Good evening.
In attendance, Imam Arif Fuskic, president and founder of Commonwealth Alliance for this inter-federalization. Thank you, Kathy, for already giving announcements about our gathering today in Zussman Park for interfered prayer for safety in our community, for peace and unity in...
for interfaith prayer for safety in our community, for peace and unity in the world everywhere. I appreciate Ketti for coming out, Councilman Osimiri, Chief Moise, and Max Garberino. We have more than about 10 faiths representatives that they give a prayer. And I thank them all for coming. We will continue, keep praying and moving forward with our actions what we ask God for. And I ask you to continue to collaborate with Common Water Alliance as you did, Mayor, and you council members, in 10 last years, and we will do many more years ahead. I would like to congratulate new council members, they are winning seats now, particularly Muhammad Hassan for coming back to council. Thank you for your interest to continue to help our community. We really need you all. And I will be in touch with you for our future prayers, as Ketti asked in summertime. We will try and gain one in a few more months. Also, I congratulate the Ukrainian community on their 100 years of, probably more than 100 years than here. And I'd be honored to meet with you, Father, to talk to you about the, about the our interfaith involvement in community, how we can help the community. Thank you so much. God bless you all.
Thank you.
You too.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Vera Andrushkiu. And just on behalf of the Ukrainian community, we'd like to thank you for considering our proposal. And we will be delighted to take part in all of the various Mother Language Day, excellent idea. I think we should especially celebrate this with the schoolchildren, because Ukrainian is, after all, one of the languages used in the UN and all of the other world meetings. So it's important. And we certainly appreciate your attention to this matter. And Shuchenko will be a wonderful name to honor. In 1848, he wrote in a poem, "When will we have our Washington with a new and righteous law? And someday we will." So this was written in Ukraine in 1848. He wanted to follow the democratic system of the United States and had these prophetic words. So I think he will be an honorable person to have his name on the streets there. So thank you very much on behalf of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have, Madam Mayor.
Right. No more public comment than...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any objection? Then we are adjourned. Thank you all.